We're going to move on to our next item this evening, which is 6F. It is on page 167 of your packet. It is the mayor salary study as requested by council. I'm going to stall for just a minute because we're waiting for our city attorney to get on. Okay, he's logging in right now. I just want to make it very clear for those who are listening that this is not an action item this evening, nor is it intended to be an action item this evening. It will come back at least two more times, once to the study session and again in July. So we are not trying to rush this through and it will come back multiple times after this evening. I will turn the floor over to our police chief Hernandez and we'll go from there. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have a question before we get started?
No, I just had a piece of a statement. I prefer to see this come to the finance committee before we even discuss it here at the council. And we have not had that opportunity for a lot of different financial situations. But I think this one warrants a meeting of the finance committee. If it needs to be done Zoom, we can do a Zoom. But I would much prefer that that is the process we uphold.
So did you want to pull it during, for this evening? Or did you want to have any discussion this evening?
It's up to you, Mayor.
Well, it's not up to me, actually. None of this, this is, this is at council request. It is not up to me. Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we should have a little conversation tonight because of the citizens that submitted their emails that we have to honor that their information has come in. But I, I do sort of lean towards the mayor pro tem on the finance committee. But I'd also recommend that this be put on the budget review as well when we have our budget retreat.
Okay. So do you want staff to give an overview or do you have questions you want to ask? Or this is your council meeting, so if you don't want to discuss it, we don't have to. And we will bring it to finance committee and the budget retreat, which I do need to email you all. The budget retreat is going to be postponed. So we can, Councilwoman Johnson?
I just want to finish up. I want people to understand that we are not rushing to make a decision that we think that it was brought to council to review and talk about, and we see a need for an adjustment. And that none of us had the idea of voting tonight, that we were all aware that this was to be presented, to look at the data that was presented and to analyze that data at another point and start our discussion in public. Because we do everything in openness in this council. We are all very strongly committed to that. And so I think people should understand, we, we see a need for our city to, is growing. And we don't have a city administrator. We haven't had for a while. And therefore, whatever mayor we have, however we define it, needs to be for a while as long as we have no city administrator. It doesn't mean things can't be changed down the rule. But this gives us a good roadmap to start down having a conversation.
Councilwoman Linden?
I support some discussion tonight. And I think it's also important to mention that regarding the comments that we appreciate, that we received from the two citizens, that council asked staff to begin to look at this. So we had to bring this item up through an addition and a deletion. And that's how it got to the council floor and then further got to city staff. So I am interested in looking into this more. And if there is an opportunity tonight, I wouldn't mind a back history on what's happened with city, trying to hire city administrators. I think it's relevant for this discussion as well. Thank you.
Freddy?
Yes, I agree. And I think a little bit of discussion is worked with on this. But part of my question I have at hand is that I really want to be versed. And I'm glad to see, you know, our city attorney come on board. Is what is the process that a city goes through, through this? Because I've heard things like a salary commission. I've heard other things going on. I'd like to know what are all those different elements that when you start going down this path that we should be logistically putting in place when we start looking at this? So that's kind of my two cents on is that I, I agree it needs to be looked at. But I want to make sure we're moving forward in the right direction, making sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's appropriately, how we're supposed to go through this process.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Would you like me to respond at this point?
Yeah, the floor is yours.
Appreciate it.
This is our city, for those that do not know.
Good evening. There are probably three big things for you to know. One is that the compensation paid to an elected official cannot be reduced below the level set at when they started their term of office. So in this case, after the election, you were at $1,500 for the mayor. That's the floor. Second, the city council itself cannot increase its compensation during your term because you vote on your compensation. And the state constitution prohibits you from increasing it during your term of office. Since the mayor cannot vote on an ordinance or a matter that involves the appropriation of monies, nor break a tie vote, you as a council are permitted to adjust her compensation during her term. The last thing, and probably to be aware of, is as you go through your deliberations, is that most, any non-represented city employee, you can't give them retroactive pay. Only under a collective bargaining agreement are you allowed to provide retro pay. So as you proceed, you know, in your, in your wisdom with this, understand that you can't backdate any decision that you make. Councilmember Paredes mentioned the salary commission. The state statute permits the council to delegate this matter to a salary commission. But understand that once you do, it's out of your hands. And the commission, it will be empowered to make the decision. So this is one of those, in your, in your sound judgment, you can set the salary for the mayor and the level of compensation. And or you could delegate that function to a commission, a salary commission. But again, at this point, it's in the council's wheelhouse. This is, you know, setting salaries and determining compensation and the budget is, that's your primary power as a body. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So would you like to just ask questions? Or would you like staff to present what they've kind of presenting this evening? What is, what is your greatest desire this evening? Councilwoman Johnson?
Question, I'd like to know what other cities have used a salary commission for council and mayor or just council? And in the cities, is it, for, I'm turning this out to council for their thoughts, is, do we feel we need to look at cities only our size? Is it, do we look at a city that's 90,000 versus 10,000? And what a mayor gets when we look at what the appropriate, what we might feel is an appropriate salary for a mayor, the size of our city, who is acting as a mayor and city administrator? Those are just questions to start off the conversation.
Councilwoman Gillespie?
Can we get staff presentation, which might answer some of the questions?
Sure, yeah.
So I'll go ahead and start it off. This was done between myself and the financial director and HR, Tricia Summers. And it was done at the request of council, and so we did. And you have the documents that were provided to you regarding the salary analysis and recommendation. And it describes or laid out materials that we utilized to come up with some of the assumptions that we did, and as well as the agenda base. If you look at page 167, you also see the split of how it had been split previously among previous administrators based on time studies that were done. And then the percentage of time spent was allocated across the different funds. And it is a moving target somewhat when we are looking at comparables. So the easiest comparables that we found and what we utilized, working with Tricia Summers, our HR slash city clerk, is we looked at Washington cities and for 2019 and 2020. We tried to use the most current data. The human resources clerk, Tricia Summers, reached out to some of the cities, got emails directly from them to clarify some of the numbers that we were seeing. And for those of you that are not aware, Association of Washington Cities is a conglomerate of all the cities in the state of Washington. And once a year, they request salary information from all of the cities so that there is one place, either for bargaining or deciding what non-exempt pay should be, that cities can draw on and they can go and look at. And the way that specifically it's broken down and what we looked at was cities with a population range of 1,000 to 1,499, which is the smallest populations that you could use. That's the lowest derivative of a small city that we can go and look at and see what the level of compensation was. And so we did that. And when we also provided in your packet was compensation for the mayor with no city administrator based on the 1,000 to 1,499 population. And then we also looked at compensation for mayors, or we looked at compensation for city administrators on the city's population of 1,000 and 1,499. To try to come up with some kind of summation and an average between them with a philosophy of a plus or minus 2%, either below or above. And we looked at salary ranges to come up with salary that we did at 93.7. We also reached out with our city attorney and had them examine and look at the potential ordinance or theoretical ordinance and the legalese to make sure that we were doing things procedurally correct and making sure that the council does indeed have legislative authority to carry out such an ordinance if they chose to do so, which you've already heard from our city attorney today. And so I could read this report, but I think the report speaks on its own. And I've seen some of the questions that come out. One of the things that I just want to make sure that there's clarification, this was not intended to be passed tonight. If you look at your agenda, item 6F, it is marked for discussion. This is a starting point for council to do deliberation and take a direction. And so I want to make sure that there is clarity in that. And what is dated July 6th is our staff analysis and salary recommendation for the mayor. That is what is dated July 6th, so we provide the most current information. And also so that someone could go back to the record and look at, at what point in time did we draw the data and our conclusions from AWC? And to be quite frank, since I've been here for six years, I am the most tenured exempt staff. The one thing that I will tell you historically is under the previous administration, the city administrator, because the lack of a city administrator was pushed out to the directors or much of the responsibility was pushed out to me. I was hired to be the police chief of the city of Milton. And that's one of the things that their current administration, when she took office, assured the citizens is that she would make, rest assured that she would make sure that the Milton Police Department had a police chief, since it certainly is the most litigious department in the entire city and is the most prominent representative of the government of Milton, and that we have day-to-day contacts with the citizens. So with that being said, I think that the council needs to consider what its options might be. And the one is, is that you have the current administration who is acting as the city administrator. You currently do not have one. So either you pay this mayor the appropriate compensation, or you hire a city administrator, or you push down, as you did in the previous years, back down to the directors to take on the city administrator's roles. And as Councilmember Paredes was much witness and part of the obligation of fulfilling the role of city administrator, because we share the responsibility at a certain point in time, he knows the difficulties that it can be when that is not your full-time position. And the or, you can exercise your legislative authority and pass an ordinance. Or you could delay and do a salary commission, understanding that once you release that authority to a salary commission, they will have the decision and the authority to set the rate of pay for either council or the mayor. And then you will have to live with that decision. So in a nutshell, that's my summation. HR, Tricia Summers is here to speak to her participation. Michelle Roebuck is here to speak to her financial analysis and the financial impact and the current trends of whether or not there is affordability in this. And you obviously have at your disposal our legal counsel. So feel free to continue to discuss. And if there are any questions specifically of me, by all means, ask.
Councilmember Linden?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I appreciate chief's candor and view from a city executive, so thank you. Also, I think it's important to just bring up the item of fairness. You know, the mayor makes $1,500 a month and is doing a full-time job during a pandemic. And I appreciate the work that she's doing. And again, it goes back to fairness. We could also consider equal pay for equal work. There's items of risk management and liability that exist here. And as far as, from a council perspective, it's difficult for council to have discussions with the Open Public Meeting Act. I can't call Jim Gillespie and talk to him about this. So our discussions need to be now, and the concerns that we have, we need to voice them. I am comfortable keeping this within my wheelhouse to make the decision, hard decision, whether it be at some point, rather than pawn it off to a salary commission. Was elected to make decisions and I am very comfortable going down this path and trying to make the best decision for our, for our city. I think the points in the letters that came in for public comment were really good. You know, size of cities and also number of employees. If we could maybe factor the number of employees that the mayor is managing as well into that, to get a glimpse of that, if that's possible, I think, I think that point was very valid, that if Polesbo has 109 employees, well, that's why that mayor makes what they make. But maybe to get some comparison on that, just so we're making the best decision possible. So thank you, city staff, and thank you, other council members.
Councilmember Paredes?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Linden there. Just one of my first blushes as I go through the report and looked at it this week, was trying to understand why we picked the certain cities. Because I, as Councilmember Linden said, I would be looking at number of employees, I'll look in, I'd be looking at a factor of budget size and population of the city. And maybe another inner factor would be, you know, the size, geographical size of the city that makes a difference too on that. But those kind of areas that we could get a pretty good comparative. One question I had is when I look at these lists and I see the differences between 1,000 and 1,499, is it that we just have a shortages of those cities that are right around 9,000 to 10,000, like Milton? I mean, 8,000 to 11,000?
Well, I can tell you, when I looked at it, it was trying to find ones where the mayor was acting as a city administrator. Other ones have city administrators. Again, since this is for discussion and to have a starting point in the starting report, we can certainly go back and we can look at geographical size. We can look at number of employees. We can look at city budget. So one thing that I will tell you, regardless of size, I can tell you this as a police chief, regardless of size, we have big city problems and we're dealing with big city issues. And so the amount of work is actually more because I have less staff here. And I can tell you, I work 10 times harder than I did when I was the elected sheriff of Jefferson County because I had more staff. Here, we do not have staff. We do all of our own work. The other thing I will tell you is that if we were to take Edgewood, for example, Edgewood is a contract city, does not have a police department, does not have an electrical department, does not have a stormwater department, not have a water department. And in this particular city, as you know, it's up to us to manage those utilities. And so again, I think that you, it is going to be, it will be difficult to ferret out. And that might be something that is decided at the finance committee, is that they decide what are the comparable cities based on size, geography, number of employees, contract city, non-contract city? It can get very intricate and it can get very complex. Again, this is where it comes to your legislative wisdom to decide how we ferret this out.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I brought it up and I'm going to explain a little bit, a little bit of history and a little bit of understanding. What we're doing is basically committing about $150,000 a year, not presently, but in the future. We recognize the fact that we need a city administrator. We've had an experience in the past which was, had reasonable goals and not too, went well. And we unbudgeted it. We didn't have enough money for it. So it was passed along to other directors and they did yeoman's work. I mean, it saved the city. If we're planting a seed for a city administrator, we can afford a city administrator's position, we need to commit to that. We need to look to the future to how to commit to that. Now, Mayor, you're doing wonderful job. That doesn't take anything away from all of the effort you put into it. You've put in a 40-hour work week and I know how you work and I know what's going to happen again. I know the successes we're having. You can't expect every mayor in the future to do that. So if another mayor comes along in two years, we better damn well have money, $150,000 to go hire an administrator who's going to do the job. We just can't be left in the lurch without being able to support our future by securing the revenue to do it. And it's just to look at the budget, it's a look at the future. I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had had a city administrator in the budget and that numbers could have been used. But we don't have that. We didn't even have a chance to look for a city administrator. You've taken on all the work and you've done the great job. But you've done it on $1,500 a month and it's an embarrassment to say you're underpaid, really, really underpaid for what you do. I think everybody here can commit to that and identify that we would not be at the success we are today if you had not become mayor and you had not taken on the responsibilities and learned and have grown with the position to be an administrator. And I applaud you for it. I'm just looking to secure this now. We're opening the door to the future and we've got to look to the future to make sure we can keep it open. I don't want to depend upon the next mayor coming in and trying to be a city administrator. You're a rare entity for us. I'm just looking to secure it in a way that we can explain to the citizens, to the utilities and everybody else that works with us, what our goal is. And our goal should be to find the funding and the means and the method over a sustained period of time to hire the appropriate person and not force it back on other directors, not force it on a mayor who has learned to do the job. But it's, I'm just looking to plan a little more for the future. So forgive me for being a little aggressive on my initial statement about bringing it to the finance committee. I think we can find the means. I think we can commit to it. We just have to know what they are and how it's going to take place. I don't want to delay this, but I appreciate your understanding.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
And I will point out page 174 to you. And this was specifically gone over with our legal advisor. And we specifically talked about giving the council the ability to retract the amount of compensation if we had someone that was not fulfilling the, the city administrator role. Scott, would you want to speak to section 2?
Certainly. I mentioned that you can't reduce an individual's salary during their term of office. And accordingly, you'll note that the compensation provided for sunsets and terminates under this ordinance on December 31st. As I spoke with the chief, we tried to set up a situation where the council would review this as part of your budget process and make a determination ongoing in 2021. You'll note that you also reserve the ability to reduce this amount. You can go back to $1,500 at your discretion at any time. Last point, and just, I'm sure the council members know, but for any citizens who are listening, to understand this is not a city manager form of government. It's a strong mayor and any city administrator would work under the direction of and take direction from the mayor. Any powers that are exercised would be those delegated by the mayor. And for that reason, I'd suggest as you think about comparables, think about or take a look at cities, you've mentioned three good factors to review, but consider the total amount paid by each city for its mayor and its city administrator as a whole. Because that's what those cities are paying to get the administrative head of the city to have those functions fulfilled.
Councilmember Johnson?
I appreciate all the comments made and from the mayor pro tem. And I understand his philosophy. My thought goes to that if we can look at a salary that can bring in a higher, more professional mayor, rather than just a citizen walking in on the street saying, I want to be mayor, because, and it's also hard to get city administrators. There, there, it's like certain positions are hard to fill. And I go back to council and say, why did we get rid of the city administrator? Was it only because of budget or was it because we really didn't have any further candidates to come in and fulfill those positions? Part of it was budget. We had to split between the chief and a public works director. I think if we can move into an avenue, look at Edgewood, their mayor, their city is only 11,000, what, 11,000, 12,000 size? Their mayor accesses, and they also have a city administrator, right? I believe.
He's a deputy or assistant administrator.
And so for me, my only concern is budget. That's why I would like to hear it on the budget review. I'd also like to look at the budget itself and also to say, we could get a higher caliber candidates coming in for mayor. Maybe that's a dream, but it's been done in other cities.
The one thing I wanted to mention too is, again, you hit the nail on the head. Council is authorizing a city administrator or the mayor, and since this is strong mayor, to manage over $25 million a year, not to mention the utility companies that we manage, which makes us very unique as a city and the fact that we have utilities. Because not a lot of cities have their own water works. Not a lot of cities have their own electric company. Not a lot of cities run their own streets. They contracted out because of the complexity and the level of expertise that is needed. They don't have the limited resources. They have limited resources because they are a small city. Edgewood is a case in point, arming up the police department. Now, with that being said, I think that, you know, everybody keeps talking about the budget. This is certainly within our financial officer's wheelhouse to speak to. And I know that is And I know that he's done some analysis about this. Before that, just one more thing. I purposely kept the mayor out of this project so that it was to protect the integrity of the, and the state. And so I just wanted to put that out there. And so if there is any frustration, be frustrated with me as a facilitator. Go ahead.
Gosh. Well, I can, I can reiterate what was stated in the agenda bill that expenditures in each of the funds that would be, that are noted here are currently trending below the budgeted amounts and should be able to accommodate. Especially for 2020, this would be actually half of the stated annual amount or, or less depending on when it was enacted. And revenues, the so far so good news is that revenues to date are actually looking fairly good. Through June 30th, our sales taxes, well, I'll move back a little. Our two top taxes are property taxes and sales taxes. And to date, sales tax, sales taxes are above budget at about 52% of budget. And they're slightly higher than even last year at this exact same time, which was a happy surprise for me and everyone else here did. And the property taxes as well were at about 53% of budget on property taxes, even with the delays and the pandemic. We're slightly below or behind where we were at the exact same time last year, but that's to be expected with the extension. With the property taxes, those are, we expect those to be fully collectible. There may be a timing difference, but we expect to get the amounts that we budgeted for them. So on the revenues side, we're, we're looking good. We're right on track, a little bit of out track. And like I said, the expense, the, the real fun to look at that this might affect is the general fund. And expenses are trending, are trending below what the budgeted amounts are. So I just, for 2020, I see this as, as the amount stated here as being able to be part of the budget. Councilmember Gillespie, did you hear your hand up? No, okay. Before I let Council, I told Mayor Pro Tem's hand first, but I have not heard. Councilmember Morton, do you have a comment before I do a second round? Councilmember Morton?
Yeah, I do have a couple of comments and a quick question. I know at one point, there was a question about the total compensation for the, with benefits. Did we get a, did we get a number on that? I don't remember hearing or seeing that somewhere.
I didn't, but I can, I can speak to that at this point. It would, it would somewhat fluctuate based on what the final compensation amount because the, the, some of the payroll taxes are based on announced. But it, but including all of the payroll taxes and full benefits, it would probably at this, at this salary level, it would probably be about $30,000. On top.
Could you say that again, please?
Beg your pardon?
I didn't hear, I couldn't hear the figure.
It was, it would be probably about $30,000 on an annual basis based on this, on this $93,000 number. And that's, that would be medical, mental, vision and payroll taxes.
Okay. So about 12125 total, if we went based off that number stated in the agenda packet? Okay.
The whole, for the, on an annual basis, yes.
Correct, on an annual basis. All right. I just wanted to get a kind of a general figure out there based on what were at least the numbers stated in the agenda packet. So thank you for that. So the other thing I wanted to mention or say is that I agree with a lot of that's been said. The, the mayor works very hard. I know she works a ton of hours, especially through all the COVID-19, this stuff that's been going on. Even before that, with all the stuff outside of our city that's going on, stuff in Olympia, neighboring cities, you know, working hard to make sure that we stay on the map with everything that's going on since we're a small city in between a lot of other big cities. So we don't get swallowed up, get forgotten. And we, she does have a lot of things to manage in our city. So our enterprise funds, you know, we do have a police department that, you know, a lot of other cities don't have. So a lot of things that a lot of people forget about that we do have that other cities don't have. So just wanted to re, to mention that again. That's one of the reasons that this was, that I brought this up. And another thing that, you know, the chief brought up and a couple of people have mentioned, but it was stated in the emails that came out was this was never intended to be an action item tonight. So I know that a couple of people thought that we weren't trying to sneak this by or pass this or push this through. So that's it for now.
Mayor Pro Tem, I saw your hand up.
Oh, thank you. And again, I'm, I'm just, I'm glad this has come to the council. I appreciate the work that has been put into it. I'm looking at the future to sustain this for whatever happens in the future, the next year and a half. We've demonstrated to ourselves, a person of your caliber is doing us exceedingly well. We're going to have to find, if we don't find it in the next mayor, we're going to have to find it in the next administrator. And we just have to be prepared for that inevitability. I don't think we'll ever find a mayor as dedicated as you are. And I say that as a compliment to you directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Lyndon?
Thank you, Mayor, again. So, yeah, I agree, you know, looking to the future, potentially, a city administrator would be a great goal for us to have. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem like that's where we're at. And that's really what, as a council, we're trying to address. This would be kind of a question to Scott. So I like, I really appreciated seeing the sort of sunset clause, January 31, 2021. So what would that look like, let's say, if a new mayor came in? Could you just sort of walk us through a hypothetical on what that date would look like for us as council members?
The way we've structured the ordinance, the additional salary increment for serving as a full-time administrator sunsets December 31st of 2021. There's a base salary is continued, the $1,500 per month amount. So as a newly elected official came in, that's their base. The council would retain the discretion, or if you decide to use a salary commission, the salary commission would have the discretion to review a salary increase for the incoming mayor. One other thing I should note, when we talk about benefits for an elected official position, we're talking solely about healthcare benefits. I had a, sometimes negative experiences inform you and had a situation about 20 years ago where a city approved a larger salary and benefits for the mayor and neglected to specify vacation and sick leave and was presented with a bill for accrued sick leave on the way out of office. So when the finance director refers to the cost, there are no hidden costs. There is no vacation or sick leave included. As an elected official, the mayor makes her own determinations in that respect. Have I answered your questions?
Yeah, maybe just a follow-up, Scott, if you could. So let's say the new mayor would come in and that person would, the assumption would be that they would be starting at the $1,500 a month. And it would be an act of council to essentially bring them on as city administrator. Or it would be the mayor, the new mayor's job to find a suitable city administrator for the city. Is that how it would work?
Yes, sir. And let me just point out that the timing doesn't, wouldn't start in November. As you, council members who, with, you know, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Whalen know, your budget discussions are ongoing. The election results are going to be certified in the midst of your budget discussion. You won't have finalized the budget. So ideally, you'll have those discussions in the context of the 2022 budget, knowing who, who the mayor is. And you can begin the discussions about expectations and make those decisions before the start of the term.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. That's sort of where I was thinking myself of how would this work in December 21st? And I'm thinking the budget, you know, it's how we defined the budget at that time. And when we look at page 172 of the packet, it, it sort of explains that if the mayor's position is adjusted from full-time to part-time, the council should, and I think it's shall, not should, it's shall. It will be the responsibility, no way, shape or about, that the council must reconsider the mayor's salary and benefits within the specific period of time, which would be by the end of the year of '21, because that's the budget process. Is that correct? Or a way, a process of the way it, you're looking at your, of the resolution? I think it's important. The other thing for me right now is, is the timing, how long it will take us to make our decision. I personally prefer, I, I think we as council are very open and can make a decision on this without going to a salary commission because we don't have enough people being participatory in our government now. And to get citizens who are really educated, there are citizens out there that fall and I don't mean to say they're uneducated. They just don't have time to follow the history, to take and look at the history and follow the process of how the council has matured. Things have changed, how the city has developed. And therefore, I think the council has more experience in making the determination on this than a salary commission for the mayor's position. Salary commission would have to be done definitely for council if we wanted, I think, if we wanted to have a change down the future, as we look to the future, for any changes to the council positions. But I, I think it needs to be very clear, if we go this way, that the council will reconsider as soon as, soon as it's. And then the definition is how do we? Are we doing it, if a person's elected and maybe they're a businessman, but maybe they had no experience at local government and we're still in the middle of the budget process? It's, you know, that's, that's another question. I'm done. I've talked too much tonight. Sorry.
Council, I just want to know, we've never gone on Zoom past two hours. So if for some reason we get disconnected, I'm just going to pre-apologize. And because of OPMA, we can't reopen a new Zoom meeting with a different number and everything. So if we get disconnected, we will adjourn at that time and I apologize in advance and I'll see you next week. Yes. But I don't think it's gonna, we don't know. We don't know what's gonna happen. So just be patient. Scott?
Just quickly, Councilmember Johnson, you know, as staff members, we try and set up the council to succeed so we can set the table for you in the budget process and, and hope that you follow through. Would note that many cities councils adjust the salaries without a budget commission, but you do it by changing the salary for the newly elected council members as they come in. So councils, as they do it, there's kind of a leapfrog effect with older council members being behind and newer council members moving ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Preddy, did I see your hand up?
Yes. I'm just, I'm processing how I'm listening to all this. And Scott, maybe you can clarify this a little bit for me. Is that how do you take the politicalness out of this? When it comes to, I mean, we, you know, we have a great council here. We all seem to get along and we were kind of on the same focus. But if you have a division in a council and you have a mayor elected and now you have your council saying, well, yeah, we don't like them very well. So we're only going to give them 1,500 a month. And others say, well, we like them a lot, so we're going to give them whatever, you know, instead of something that's more based on what is the need of the city? Does the city need a city administrator? Or does the city need a CEO mayor? You know, going on, I just struggle with this a little bit about where it's, it's just kind of, you know, okay, we're going to make the decision as we're going through budget when there's a political process of a mayor being elected at the time. And how do, how does a mayor or a citizen decide if they're going to run for mayor when they're not even sure what the status of what their role is going to be in the city?
And that's why, I guess, I would encourage you, I mentioned it earlier, let me say it again. As you look at cities, to consider the total amount that is being spent for the mayor and city administrator. Because that's what you're paying for administration. And the short answer is, a longtime staffer, we can't take the politics out of it. It will always be a part. That's why the Constitution provides you can't reduce the salary of a person while they're in office. But it's also why we set that minimum at 1,500 so the council can exercise that discretion and hopefully have this discussion both now and in 2021 as part of the budget process.
Additional questions or comments in council this evening? So again, no actions being taken on this and staff will review everything that was said tonight. And we will look at bringing this back, not only to council, but the finance committee and a budget retreat as well. So we do have one item, as long as we don't get kicked off Zoom here, that was added by Councilmember Lyndon and seconded by Councilmember Johnson.